Has nothing to do with us creating an EMS district.
No, no, these are just making sure that we're doing the rights on the books.
Okay.
Chairman, we are live.
Okay, welcome back, everybody. We're in the afternoon session of May 1st. As everyone could probably notice, we're starting at 1:30. The 1 o'clock public hearing on the Hurles Stewart facility was postponed until further information from the city of McCall and the applicant. So we're going to move right on down to our next agenda item. This is an action item. This is approved the proclamation to designate mental health awareness for the month of May. You guys want to come on up?
Yeah.
Shall I give your, give us a name of the town you live in for the record and we'll go from there.
My name's Connor Young. I'm a health policy analyst for Central District Health out of Boise.
And I'm Shelley Hitt. I'm the program coordinator for Valley County Open Response Project out of Boise.
This is kind of something we do every year, isn't it?
They haven't done this.
I think this is a first for Valley County.
We've done the recovery month.
The recovery month in September.
Like, are you, because I don't know, but that's probably true. I know you sent it to us. There it is. Got it. You want to read it?
Um, I can read the proclamation. I just had a little verbiage too.
Okay.
I'm going to go ahead and read that.
Go ahead, Connor.
So first, I would just like to thank Commissioners Thompson and Hasbrook for your time today, as well as Clerk Miller for setting this up. And so over the last couple of years, unprecedented challenges has put a spotlight on the mental health crisis facing our communities across the nation, especially our rural and underserved communities. Every year, the month of May is designated as Mental Health Awareness Month, which provides an opportunity for mental health awareness, support, increased quality of life, and compassion for individuals with mental illnesses. This time is also used to thank the dedicated mental health providers who service and support improve the lives of their patients and families. Stigma is still a major factor for these individuals living with mental illness and it sometimes will delay treatment or cause individuals not to seek treatment at all. Everyone has a role to play in reducing the stigma around mental illness, and it starts with showing compassion. So no one feels ashamed when asking for help. And as a reminder, anyone can experience a mental health condition at any point in their lifetime. And as you know, Valley County lacks professionals to treat all the need in the county. Last year, 988 was launched nationally, and so this has streamlined the access to the Idaho Suicide Crisis Lifeline. But this isn't a solution to the issue. It's just kind of a one step to a solution. And also, I just wanted to highlight to VCor, so the Valley County Open Response Project, has also made significant progress in providing mental health services and recovery services for Valley County residents. And so today, on behalf of VCor, we are requesting that the Commissioners proclaim May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Valley County, Idaho.
Thank you, Connor. I appreciate that.
Would you like me to read the proclamation too?
Um, if you want to. Go ahead, yeah.
Okay. Whereas mental health include our emotional, psychological, social, and spiritual well-being, it affects how we think, feel, and act. It also affects how we handle stress, relate to others, and make choices. And whereas mental health allows us to maintain relationships, take care of ourselves and families, take care of our physical bodies, and respond and adapt to daily life challenges. And whereas mental health is important at every stage of life, from childhood through adulthood, and can change over time depending on factors. And whereas mental illnesses are among the most common health conditions in the United States, with one in five adults and one in six children being affected annually. And whereas unfortunately, feelings of personal shame and fears of social stigma and discrimination prevent many living with mental illness from seeking help. However, stigma can be reduced by increasing awareness of mental illness and of resources available for those suffering from mental health conditions. Now, therefore, we, the Valley County Board of County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month. In Valley County, Idaho, we also call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, and schools in Valley County to recommit to our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions.
Thank you, Connor, for reading that. I think I read somewhere once where everyone has a mental health issue. It's just a matter of degrees of exposure, so to speak. And I think this job will give you some mental health issues all by itself.
All by itself.
So every, you understand what we're doing here?
Yeah.
Basically, the proclamation.
I'll take 2023 off of it. Just make May month, you know, and it covers every year.
Well, you have to renew them every year? Yeah, there's something you have to re-proclaim every year?
Yeah, it's usually, I think it's up to the county, but I know the state and nationally, they re-proclaim it. So that's why I put the year, but it's totally your decision.
Well, this time I will make a motion to approve the proclamation to designate mental health awareness for the month of May.
Second.
Who didn't second it? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. You guys will get it printed out and all official.
Actually, you have to let Shelley.
Doug, you want to add anything?
Thank you very much. Appreciate the support and everything for the Valley County Open Response Project. So, yeah, and it's nice that we're expanding into the behavioral health. Appreciate your support.
Great job.
And I will say, we want to put this in the Star News too as well, the proclamation, so be on the lookout for that.
All right.
A bunch of guys do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next agenda item.
Clerk's office is printing it off. Hopefully, they'll bring it up in just a couple of minutes and then you guys can head out. Okay.
We'll sign it as soon as we get it and get it to you. Our next agenda item is an action item. This is the fiscal year 2022 audit presentation by Jordan Zweigard.
Yeah.
Perfect job.
We'll do the counties first, and then we'll go out, recesses the county, reconvene as EMS board, and do the EMS.
Perfect. That sounds great.
So I'll briefly go over the audit report. I'll just kind of hit some high points. If you have questions, please stop me. I'm more than happy to go in more detail. But if you turn to page three, and with our letterhead on it, this is our opinion on your financial statements. And so what it says is that we looked at your financial statements, looked at the accounting records and the support on them, and in our opinion, they are materially correct. What that means is that throughout the years, you're getting reports. You can rely on those. Those were accurately reflecting what was going on. From there, I will jump forward to page eight. And these are the balance sheet for your major funds, for the big funds for the year. So you see there at the top, general fund, it ended the year with just over $5 million. Road and bridge, about 10.5 million. And then solid waste at about $3.6 million.
Page eight.
Are you on the big one or the small one?
Small one.
We'll start with the big one.
It's the big one.
Get the big one now out of the way. So yeah, page eight should say general fund, road and bridge, and solid waste across the top.
Got it.
Perfect. So like I said, 5 million, general fund, 10.5 in bridge, 3.6 in solid waste. The receivables, property tax and special fee, that's just back taxes still owed at the end of the year. Interest receivable, you had about 30,000 in the general fund, about just under 10 in road and bridge. Most of that's just LGIP, the interest earned in September that's paid the next month. Prepaid items, that 128,000 in general fund, about 27,000 in road bridge, and just under 3 in solid waste. Most of that's insurance that you've spent, but the insurance period just covers beyond your year, so it sits there until that's used. The due from other governments of $286,000, that's state sales tax. You get your September portion paid out in October, so we pull that back. So the revenue's in the correct year. And then on the liability side, warrants and accounts payable, about 550 in the general fund, 2.7 in road, just over 200 in solid waste. That's just timing of when invoices come in there.
Is, um, PTO and all that in there too as well?
That is not in there. We will, we will look at that though, at that number. That's a good question. Yeah. So just the way that accounting standards work for governments, it's not sitting on this page. I'm turning to page nine. Next is the PILT fund. You ended the year with $2.7 million left in that PILT fund, and you had about 52,000 of payables. And then all of the other funds combined, we'll look at them. I'll show you where they are individually later, but that ended with about 6.2 million. Then again, a little bit of receivables and items there. Total government-wide, though, you ended up with about 28.2 million at the end of the year. Any questions on that? All right, turn forward two pages to page 11. Yes.
I'm sorry, Jordan, go back a little bit. The due from other governments, is this for like, I probably should look in the road department. We're still owed some FEMA money. Is that figured in here?
No, because that wouldn't be due yet because that's all reimbursement. And so until it's, I believe FEMA's reimbursement, so until it's spent and the request sent out, it wouldn't show up there. Yeah, it's more of a cash basis. So as that's used or requested, that will come in.
Okay.
But until that time, just because it's not for sure, you know, if you'll use it all or not, it doesn't show up.
We're hoping to get it this summer, but we'll see.
So, no, good question. Any other questions there? Perfect. Jumping to page 11, this is the income statement for those funds. So the third line from the bottom there, you'll see net change in fund balance. General fund had a loss of $1 million. If you look up a little bit, you'll see unrealized gain loss of investments of 1.5 million. So that loss really is because at the end of September, your investments were worth $1 million less than they were the year before. So that's not a real loss because those are held to maturity, so that won't be realized, but for accounting, it sits on there. So if you exclude that, you really had about a gain of 250,000. A road and bridge, you did run a loss there of about $121,000. A solid waste had a gain of 965,000. Turning the page. PILT, that fund increased by 2.6 million. Part of the reason for that was the old PILT fund was closed out and moved to a new PILT fund, partially because of accounting changes, and that's what caused part of that. And then all the other funds combined had a decrease of about 1.8 million. So government-wide, you had it increasing your total reserves by about 580,000 for the year. Any questions on those? Turn to page 14. In, in your audit, we include the fair board as well, and there's what we call a component unit there. So the fair board ended the year with $55,000 of cash. And then if you turn to page 15, this just shows the activity. They brought in 38,000, spent about 30,000, so they increased their reserve by about $8,000. Attorney.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, that change in net position.
Change in the 8640.
Yep, that's what they increased their cash by for the year. I'm turning to page 16. And these next two pages, these are funds that the county collects on behalf of other entities, most of it being property tax and state revenues from DMV and other sources that you collect and remit out. So you ended the year with about 535,000 sitting there, just under $1 million of back taxes still owed. I mean, 344,000 owed out. Then if you turn to the next page, I mean, you see the county brought in 43 million and sent out $43 million there. That's just funds in and out that flow through the county.
So we bumped the net too a little bit.
And that's just timing. So that, that net will go up and down.
Yeah, that makes sense.
As funds come in and out there. After that are the footnotes. Great reading material tonight if you can't fall asleep. So I'll jump to page 25. I'm just going to hit a few of these, I promise. You don't want to be here all night. Page 25, yeah, this just shows the breakout of investments here. And if, I can hold a minute if you want to sign that doc declaration real quick.
Um, no, it's okay. Go ahead.
So you see that external investment pool, 6.8, that's the state LGIP. You had CDs, just under $1 million worth of CDs there. You have got just over $10 million of US government bonds, and then just over 5 million of asset-backed securities.
That's going to change big time this year. Big time. We're going to have a lot in CDs.
Okay. And as those rates have come up, they, yeah.
Yep.
A little bit more attractive there. And the state investment pool, that rate also saw a big increase this year as well. From there, I'm going to jump forward again to page 37. I'm up the top footnote 11. It says compensated absences. This is that PTO or vacation time. So you can see there was an increase for the year. I mean, sorry, the year of about $542,000 worth of vacation time owed to employees. Ended the year with 598, so there was an increase. And most of that increase is just due to increase in wages. Not necessarily that people were holding on to more time, but that time was worth more, which is pretty common with what we've seen causing that increase there. From there, I'll turn to page 30.
We're currently 478, which is lower than the year before. So we're improving that a little bit.
Yeah, some of the times coming down, yeah. The, the, that's the current portion. The total, it did go up from 542 to 598. The current portion is what's anticipated to be used in the next year. And like I said, most of that's increased not because people are holding on to more hours, but because their pay rate went up, so those hours are worth more.
Does that seem like a good ratio? I mean, is that?
That's, yeah. What we're really looking for there is that at least most of what's being earned is used. So everyone saw a little bit of an increase in that number this year, just because over the last 12 months, wages of, for most have gone up. So yeah, you're still within what we expect to see and kind of in line with the other counties that we've seen. But the important thing there that we look for is that people are taking the vacation, taking some time off.
Well, we're trying to get more people to take more time off.
Yeah.
And they just love working here and they don't want to leave. Right, Gaby?
That's, that's it.
Okay, where are we going next?
Uh, turn to page 38. This shows the long-term obligations of the counties, of the county. So you do have some leases there. So you see, you started the year with three leases, with about 316,000 on them. You entered into two more leases during the year. So paid down about 266, you have about $472,000 left on those. And below there, you can see the minimum payments through 2027, when those would all be paid off.
This. How do you pay a lease off?
So the leases normally have a term, so that's just the term of the lease.
It's not purchasing the piece of equipment. It's just leasing the piece.
Some of them do have a purchase option at the end of them, where at the end you do keep the equipment.
Right.
Some of them, you return the equipment, and then at that point, you'd start a new lease, and then we would, it would just start over there.
Yeah, just turn, yeah.
So yeah, some of them continually turned over, some of them, the equipment is kept. And so what we, what we show here is just what, as of September 30th, what the county had committed to paying.
And we haven't had any 602 and ends for quite some time, other than the one up the road here. Other taxing districts.
Oh, yeah, and I think.
On the bottom of 38.
Yeah. I think that one, I can't remember when that one finishes up.
Is this the second year, Doug, or third?
I believe it's the third year.
I think it's the third, so two more after this.
Two more years, okay.
Okay.
I'm turning to page 40 there. These next couple, this just shows what was budgeted for the year versus what actually happened. So you see there, the, in the general fund revenues, you brought in about $114,000 more than was budgeted. I'm on the expenditure side, you spent, I'm about $2.7 million less than was budgeted for the year. Most of that operating expense is coming in under what was budgeted there.
This is on the right side of all, you know?
Both, both of those were positive, meaning you brought in some more and, and spent some less, so that's what we like to see. Turning to page 41, this is for road and bridge. And you ended up there bringing in almost $2.3 million more. Most of that from intergovernmental or grants. I'm coming in there over what was budgeted, and you spent about $840,000 under what was budgeted for the year. So instead of using about 3.6 million of your reserve like you planned, you only ended up using about 500,000 of the reserves. I'm turning to page 42. Solid waste, you're able to bring in about 871,000 more there, spend about $242,000 less than budgeted. And again, you'd budgeted to spend about 177,000 of your reserve, and instead you increased it by 936,000.
We're going to have some big things come out of that this year, the roof and a new baler.
Yeah.
So that'll go down quite a bit.
And that's.
We're still pretty solid there.
Yeah, and that's what we expect to see with government entities is a couple of years where you add to that reserve quite a bit, and then a few years where it's spent down, just because you're never going to bring in enough in one year to do those big projects. So we expect to see that saved up for a few years and then spent down. Page 43, PILT, this was that, that new PILT fund there. And so it looks like 2.8 million was brought in less, but that's the full, all the PILT was, the PILT was split between two funds this year, and that's what caused that one to look a little bit different.
So right now, PILT, we got 2.66 million.
Yep, we, we do. Mr. Chairman, remember, there was a contribution made to the fire districts.
Oh.
So we're actually, this is a little bit deceiving. We're actually down to about 1.4 million.
1.4?
Yep.
And that's the, the nature in audit is, it's always old, so.
That's still a nice carryover.
Okay.
Go ahead.
From there, I'll just kind of point out the next couple reports. Jumping to page 48. This just breaks out the general fund revenue. I'm a little bit more there, again, budget versus actual. And then pages 49 through 51, this breaks up each department of the general fund and showing what was budgeted versus what actually happened. All of the departments did come in under budget. Some of the line items were over budget, but as a total, all the departments did come in at budget or under.
Yeah, but we're pretty close on corner, aren't we?
You hit it dead on.
I was going to say, some of them were right on budget. I think, what one was I looking at?
Few of them, the engine center, they're right on.
Funding and zoning came in $1 under budget, but everyone was either right at budget or, or under.
Hmm, this is good news. Okay.
After that, page 52.
Back to 50?
Yes.
Yeah, economic development, budget is 680,000, actual 65.
There's a large expense line in there for grants. If we apply for grants that are related to economic development, we have to budget for that, but we also capture it on, on the revenue side. But we did not apply, or we were not awarded the grants that we were looking at for economic development for fiscal year 2022.
So that's why the.
That's why it shows that the budget was 680,000, but we only expended 65,000.
Yep, okay.
Any other questions on that?
Nope.
Page 52 to page 60, this is the balance sheet for all of your other funds. So going through them, everything there is pretty consistent. One of the big things we look for, or if any funds have negative cash in them, and no funds this year had negative cash, so all of them operated, were ended the year with a positive amount of cash.
Question.
Yes.
Jordan, or maybe this is for Doug, but under election, page 53, that 588,000, where does that go?
That's for consolidated elections.
This is only for elections from here on.
And it's for, only for consolidated elections.
Okay, and this is revenue from the state for that purpose?
That's correct.
So what can we do with the excess?
So we are going to look at purchasing e-poll books is one of the items that we're looking at purchasing. It was also, we, a few, two years ago, we upgraded our, our counting machine, the tabulator. A portion of the election consolidation money was used for that. So it, it only can be a portion for election-related costs.
Can you pay poll workers and all that stuff out of this?
We do.
Okay.
Again, only for consolidated elections.
Those ones that are consolidated. Hey, thanks, Jordan, go ahead.
Yeah, no, great questions. Any questions on any of the, those other funds?
You see no red ink yet?
Pretty high too, but that'll all go out this year as well.
Probably the other biggest one is on page 57, the ARPA funds. There's just over $2 million there. I don't know if that's been allocated yet, but at September 30th, that's where those funds were sitting.
We've got a lot more in there since then.
We do. And Commissioners, the first ARPA dollars that we have, the Commissioners have to at least have a commitment of how to spend that $2 million by 2024. And the other funding that we received has to be allocated, I believe, by 2026.
That's, that's one still coming, yeah.
I thought, Doug, that we had to commit it by 24 and spend the 2 million by 26, but the rest of it is, we could take our time. No?
I think that's correct. I don't know that.
Only the 2.2 or 2.4 we have to be spent by 26.
I don't know that they put a limit on the second tranche of.
You know, Jordan?
Off the top of my head, I thought it was 2026, but I, I.
For all of it, or just the very first year we got?
I'll go back and reread the final rule. Where you guys got over two, there's a special rule if you're under 2 million and different rules if you're over 2 million. So the over 2 million, I don't want to say the dates, but I will, I have the final rule back at the office, and I can look that up real fast and send that to Doug. If he doesn't find it here first.
I think, if I remember, they had to be designated by 24.
And spent by 26, but just the first.
26.
Just the first 2.2 million. The other that we got, we're over 5 million now?
Yeah, we received 3.3 in October, which was just after the end of the fiscal year, so it wouldn't be reflected in this.
Right, right, it's about in this. And there's no restrictions on that.
So far, there's been no restrictions that I'm aware of.
Just on that first.
Just on the first tranche.
Well, that would be good to find out, because I can't believe we can just let that money sit there forever. Well, that might be something to dig out too, but.
I'm going to have to look a little bit more time and look. I mean, I know I've saved the final rules.
I, I've been wrong a lot lately, so check.
Well, and, and those ARPA funds, the rules have fluctuated quite a bit since they were first issued, and they've kind of refined them as they've gone, so.
But no, Kayla, I want something to show Neil here. Neil, on that same page, 57, it has the forest tax revenue. 25,556. That's what we get from timber sales on national forests that aren't in stewardship program. And that used to be around $8 million a year.
That's, yeah, I remember that.
It's like, that's where we ran a road department on for years and years, so that's a big change. Just, just, you know, I'm sorry, I'm going, go ahead, Jordan.
No, no, I appreciate you pointing those things out. Next from page 61 to 69, this is the income statement on all those. Again, that third line from the bottom kind of shows the net change. Unless, you know, there were some that went up and down. You see on page 61, a district court had some, some bigger expenses this year, so it did go down this year. But none of them went, went negative. All of them ended up in the black in total.
We've still got a lot of money in that district court. Wait, wait till the first murder case. Yeah.
From there, page 70 and 71, this just breaks out those funds that the county receives and passes through. Between, oh, for other governments, that's state money, and taxing districts, that's property tax that you get and goes through. So it just breaks it up between those. Page 73, this shows all of the federal funds that are spent during the year, so not necessarily all the federal money received, particularly that ARPA money. It doesn't show up here till it's spent. So in total, you spent 2.9 million. And anytime you spend over $750,000, in addition to doing just the normal financial audit, we do what's called a single audit, where we look more at compliance with grant agreements and controls. So the, starting on page 75, that triggers two additional reports here that we put in the back. 75 is over your financial reporting as a whole. I mean, looking specifically around controls around financial reporting, you know, making sure that bank statements are reconciled and tying out, making sure that invoices are approved before they're paid, just looking at good controls are in place. We did not have any findings, and we saw good controls are in place and did not see any compliance issues.
That's good news.
Yes. And then page 77, this is specific to federal funds. Again, looking at the same things, but in addition to financial, looking at the compliance aspect, making sure that things are being reviewed and approved, and that all the compliance requirements are being met. And again, in '22, we did not have any issues. If you look into the very last page, 81, last year, we did have two findings. So just to follow up on those. One, the Title III funds, those were, there were some compliance issues there. Those have been resolved. Doug has put procedures in place to make sure that's resolved. And then the other one was the fair board. That was kind of the first year we looked at the fair board, and they didn't. and they didn't really have controls in place. And when we looked this year, uh, we saw that bank statements were being reconciled in their system, uh, invoices were being looked at. So the Fair Board did put changes in place that we'd recommended, and, um, are starting to review those things and reconcile. So we saw a, a good change there. So overall, good, clean audit report, um, no, no real issues that we saw. And everything while we were on here, we were able to resolve and get everything straight, so.
Um, trying to find, I want to go back, there's one question on the opioid response funds. So the public knows, where in the heck is it? Lasted. There was a lot of. Is that? Anyway, somewhere in here, it had a total of opioid, not opioid, the coronavirus funds, excuse me.
Oh, the American Relief, um, page fifty seven shows the total you had at September thirtieth, that, the two point one million?
No, not ARPA, the, the, uh, um, coronavirus funds that we got. And there was a lot of talk in the, in the community about how much money we got, and if I could find that.
I don't know.
Where did I see it? I don't remember seeing that.
Chairman, I think that was fiscal year twenty twenty one, were the cares dollars that we received from the state, is that what you're referring to?
Maybe.
Next, there wasn't a specific, uh, fund this year that had those in them.
So that had been here before, but it was only twenty, I think it was twenty three thousand, if I remember.
It was a little bit more than that, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, then maybe we'll talk about something. It's not ARPA funds. I don't know, it went away, it's gone.
Let it go, Al, let it go.
Let it go, okay, never mind, I'll find it, scream it out in the middle of the night. Huh, okay, is that, uh, good enough for this one, and we can move to the EMS?
Yep, well, and if, before you move, if you want to make a motion.
We need to make a motion to approve the audit, right? Yep, thank you, sir.
Hey, I make a motion, we approve the Valley County Idaho audit for year ending September thirty, twenty twenty two.
I'll second that motion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, good job on this. So at this time, we're gonna recess as the county commissioners and reconvene as the EMS board, and we were gonna go through the EMS audit.
Perfect, this one's a little quicker here. Um, turning to page, uh, one, there with our letterhead, this is our opinion on the financial statements for the EMS district. Looked at everything, looks support, and in our opinion, um, they are materially correct. Um, there, so the same, same opinion letter, everything looks good there. Uh, from there, I will jump forward, uh, to page five. Uh, this is the balance sheet for the EMS district. Um, so you see, ended the year with a hundred and forty three thousand dollars in cash, and about twenty six thousand dollars worth of back property tax still owed to the EMS district. Um, then jumping to page seven. Um, so you see, brought in one point two million, just over one point two million total revenue, um, most of that property tax. Spent out, um, one point two million to the various districts and total expenses, uh, for a total increase in your reserve of about eight point five thousand dollars, eighty five hundred dollars there.
So, yeah, let me ask a question here, um, probably you. So we have an EMS district, correct?
Mm-hmm.
We are also looking at possibly creating its own district. What it, what's?
The way it is now, the old, EMS district now is free two thousand twenty. And we have to follow the old code, which says we can only levy, levy up to a certain amount, I think it's point zero four, point zero two, Doug?
Zero two, I think it was, yeah.
And if we want to levy higher, we've got to dissolve the old district and reform a new district, which will allow us to levy at a higher rate.
So that's what we're looking at possibly doing down the road here.
Yeah, but the thing about this report is, on page seven, that hundred and forty six thousand four ninety five that you see there, we have in reserve in the EMS budget for extraordinary expenses. Sometimes we have to buy an ambulance, or we got to do some major repairs through the, off the year, or. We kind of keep a little back, just for those emergency cut, one year, we used it to purchase some stuff for the Yellow Pine ambulance. Needed tires and some machines and that kind of stuff, so, um, they don't get all of it, so to speak, they get most of it though.
Okay, okay.
Kate, go ahead, Jordan.
Um, after that, um, are the footnotes, uh, I'm, there's really nothing in there different from prior year, so I'll jump to page fifteen. This just shows what actually happened versus what was budgeted for the year. Uh, so, you came in, you brought in about thirteen thousand dollars more than was budgeted. Um, and you ended up spending about just under five thousand dollars more than was budgeted. Um, I say, you still increased the reserve, but you did spend more that was budgeted, and that was just mainly because that extra came in there. From there, I'll jump to page seventeen. Um, so, all government entities in Idaho, in addition, look at the financials, we look at controls around financial reporting. Um, so the EMS district is pretty small. Um, currently, Doug keeps everything on an Excel spreadsheet, you know, there's, I think, maybe five checks right now during the whole year. Um, if that, so it is pretty small. So we didn't feel that there was a finding that we would consider material or significant, because of the small volume, it would be pretty easy to spot something. We did recommend to Doug, though, that that change, how it's being kept, um, that either that be rolled into the accounting software, but really, the big change is there that it should follow the same controls as the county, as far as those expenditures out should be reviewed, approved, um, and initialed, someone other than Doug should be reviewing those bank statements. Um, really just to make sure that there are two sets of eyes on those, um, going forward.
That's not gonna be an issue, because there's not that many checks, is there?
No, we, we, I would definitely, uh, encourage us to move in a direction of that, of having dual control of that account.
So is this a, just an internal deficiency, or is it a material?
So just an internal, we didn't feel that it was significant or material because of the small volume. If there, at this point, with how it's operating, if there was an extra trick written, it would stick out like a sore thumb, because there's such a small volume. But, you know, as you go forward, uh, those, that'd be a good practice just to put that in place now, so that it's set up and, and operating that way, you know, especially as you go forward, looking to, you know, whether create a new district or what, that way, those procedures are already in place, that everything's being looked at by at least two people.
Makes sense. Got it. Hey, anything else?
That is all on that one. Um, so, and I'll save for both of them, if you do happen to look at it later and have questions, my number's on the top of all the letterhead. Feel free to reach out, I'm always happy to answer questions, um, you know, if you're looking at it later.
Appreciate that, Jordan, because I, I'm gonna go back and look for that, I know I saw it, but. I'll make the motion that we approve the EMS audit for two thousand twenty two. Second, who did second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, thank you, sir, appreciate your help, and the good price.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if the treasurer had some comments.
Oh, Johanna? Come on up, we're, I guess we're not done yet, Jordan, sorry.
Sorry, I was just going to be available to explain the unrealized loss on investments if you had questions regarding that, because that's kind of.
That was in twenty two, which we didn't have a lot of ARPA money or anything, didn't we?
Well, it doesn't have anything to do with that, actually, it has to do with market conditions, and, um, the way that the investment account works. So the investment account isn't, uh, like a normal bank account, where you can look in it, and you have a set amount of money at any given time, because we purchase several investments over the years. Those investments have a value associated with holding them through maturity, but the value in between the time you purchase them and when they mature can fluctuate on a daily basis. And so what we do is, on September thirtieth, we give the statement to the auditor, and he makes a single entry to adjust the account value to that snapshot in time. So I'm gonna give you just a little bit of, uh, background example, so you can understand. So we are purchasing investments all the time, throughout the year, we'll purchase maybe one or two investments a month, um, based on maturity and, and free cash. And those investments that we purchase have different terms. So some of them are two-year investments, some of them are four years, some of them are six year, but they're, they all have different maturity lives. And say, back in twenty twenty, uh, when interest rates were very low, the current treasurer back then was purchasing these investments, because that was the best opportunity that they had to make interest. While the interest rates were very low, sometimes lower than one percent. So if you purchase a six-year investment in twenty twenty, um, and say you're gonna make less than one percent interest when it matures in twenty twenty six, you are still gonna, you're gonna make that money, and the value of that investment has not lost money. But on the books, that investment right now is not worth very much money, because nobody wants to buy an investment that's making less than one percent interest. So the current time value of that investment right now is very low, because interest rates are, right now, in our current market are very high. So if you take a statement, which is what we get monthly from our investment account, it shows the current value of that investment, not the, the value of it if it's held to maturity. So in the current market, where our interest rates are very high, we will see that a lot of the investments made prior to the interest rate starting to increase, the value of them is very low, even though we will not get rid of them until they've matured. So we are not losing money on our investments.
Making any.
We're just, well, we, we will make some money, but it's not very much. But we, um, you know, we invest in very secure things, such as US Treasury notes. I also did want to respond to your comment about, um, investing in more CDs. While I have purchased a few CDs in the last couple of months, because the rates are high, the majority of our investments remain in the US Treasury notes, because CDs are only FDIC insured up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we have about, uh, ten million dollars in Treasury notes.
Your notes.
So the majority of our investments is in notes, we have a large portion of our investments in the LGIP, which is the state pool, and that's backed by the state of Idaho, Treasury notes are backed by the federal government. We do have CDs and other investments, but they are, we make sure that we regulate those, so that they're all within the two hundred and fifty thousand limit, or they're backed by the government, so.
And what is it now that's not good, the bonds?
Um, bonds can be good if they're federally backed bonds, triple A rated.
The bank down in California that lost because they invested, not in bonds.
Uh, that was, uh, was it a cryptocurrency bank?
What, what that's more, and that's very different than what you're investing in, is, like you said, interest rates were really low, so, banks have to keep so much, and they were investing in bonds and things at below one percent, which no bank keeps enough cash on hand to cash out all of its deposits. And so they were keeping them in these, and at a point in time, the value went down, and they had to liquidate those at less than they invested in them to try to pay back the deposit.
And that's what got them in trouble.
That's what got them in trouble.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, there was multiple factors involved in that as well, that banks, the majority of that bank's customers were all within, like, the same social circle, essentially. And so if one person starts talking and say, hey, the bank had to liquidate assets to pay us, the rest of them all panicked. And, and they've, their customer base was, um, majority, like, tech companies, startup companies, that are now starting to struggle as the pandemic goes away, so they were needing more cash, and that, when they went to pull it, they couldn't pull it, so.
Thank you for the correction.
Yes, absolutely.
Well, good to have, good people know what they're doing.
Always happy to answer questions.
Thank you, thanks, Jordan, again, safe travels.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, I think this is the last agenda item for the day.
Mr. Chairman, just for the housekeeping matters, if you want to, um, adjourn as the Valley County EMS district, and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners.
They'll, they'll keep you in line, Blaine. So we're gonna adjourn as the EMS board and reconvene as the Valley County Board of County Commissioners. Our next agenda item is an action item, this is to consider property tax exemption applications. Sue, is this like a workshop, like we did the other day, or are we gonna? Okay. Okay, so come on up. This is an open session, just so to remind everyone. Want us down there? No, 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 okay. All right. So these are four new ones? Two new ones.
So the hospital ones that we didn't.
Oh, yeah, 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 I forgot about those.
We are going to discuss Camp Pinewood and CISGRA applications.
Pinewood and what's the other one?
CISGRA.
CISGRA?
So St. Luke's, McCall Memorial Hospital District.
Hey.
Camp Pinewood and CISGRA. And one of the ones that was denied, because they needed to record a deed, actually recorded it and got.
Let's do one thing at a time, okay?
Well, we'll see if you have, we have time.
Okay, so whatever you guys want to do first. We have lots of time, we got the rest of the day. Gotta go work on my Jeep.
St. Luke's, let's do St. Luke's.
I'll go sit down there.
Enjoying the fun.
Great, you're gonna do St. Luke's first, that where we're going?
Yeah, do you want me to put your applications up on the screen again, or?
If you only, if you guys want to see them.
Did you bring the file for Pinewood and CISGRA? Okay, so if they want to look at something, you can just hand it to them, is that okay?
So we're gonna do the, uh, St. Luke's, McCall LTD, those two?
Yes.
Oh.
Two of them, I think.
St. Luke's and McCall Memorial Hospital District.
How is, if I was reading that, I know St. Luke's. I don't know if they bought them controlling interest, but what happens to the McCall Memorial Hospital District? Isn't it now St. Luke's District? What is that?
No, so the McCall, so the McCall Memorial Hospital District is a, basically, it's a geographically defined region that is a taxing district, so they have the authority to, uh, tax within, within that region. They are the owner of interest in the hospital and the several properties, parcels around it. They lease that to St. Luke's, I believe St. Luke's has an option to purchase, to purchase that property. So if, uh, if St. Luke's acquires all the ownership interest in all the parcels, I think your question is what happens to the taxing district? I think the taxing, taxing district will remain in place, because whether it's the taxing district that owns the hospital, or St. Luke's that owns the hospital, there still would be a, a, an interest in receiving taxes to support the, to support the hospital. But as you will see in these applications, St. Luke's owns some parcels independent of Memorial, uh, McCall Memorial. And so it's kind of this blend, the parcels that St. Luke's owns are, they appear to be either used for housing doctors and nurses, or they're being renovated for either the same purpose or for, uh, like, doctors' offices, or, uh, other, other types of parcels. But they're under renovation, so we don't know at this point in time whether or not. So, my question, because I don't know, I know, Kaskin Memorial just bought a house down in leisure time for provider housing. And it's a rotational, whoever the providers can use that for the three or four days they're on, and then they're gone, and somebody else comes in. Is that exempt? Well, it's a good question. We have to decide. So, St. Luke's, well, kind, yeah, St. Luke's has asked the assessor, as soon as they move some of their staff in, and they're collecting rent on those properties, they have actually asked the assessor to take those off of their rolls.
Or put them on the list, if they're collecting rent.
If they're collecting rent, they're taking them off the rolls, that's what you told me. That's what you told me. If they are being renovated or being used, so they have two parcels that are basically vacant lots that they're using for overflow parking and snow storage. Those are, those are being asked to be put on the rolls. And then there are other parcels that are under, under, uh, renovation. They do not have anybody in there and they're not collecting rent, so they are also asking those to be on the rolls. Those are, or the statute, taxed exempt because they are in the process of, of being built out to be used for hospital purposes.
But don't we look at the present use of that building as it is since the day?
Correct.
And if it's not being lived in, it's being remodeled and it's not exempt?
No, no, it's different under the hospital, the, the certain hospital statutes than it is for, charitable or religious purposes. It's a different statute, different set of criteria. So, and, and that one is very explicit that if, uh, for example, if, uh, if you were building a hospital and you were under construction, the bare land would be taxed, but the, uh, the rest of the structure would be exempt.
So the only ones we, we really got to talk about, in other words, two parking lots that are used for parking and snow storage.
Yeah. And my recommendation is that those are exempt for the same reason that construction is, uh, because they're being used, they're being used for, uh, for the purpose of the hospital.
But if they rent them out to someone that's not a doctor or a nurse, it's just, then that's just a normal rental and they would come on the book.
Correct. And St. Luke's is the way they are managing their properties and they're interpreting the statute. Once they have doctors or nurses in there and they're collecting rent from those properties, they are asking the assessor to put those back on the tax rolls.
Because it's for people working for them.
Just like any other rental. So there is, so we do need to reconcile those issues with the Cascade Hospital District.
Well, it's the same, gonna be the same issue because they're only renting it to providers. Providers are PAs or doctors that come up for three or four days and then go somewhere else, home, and then come back, you know, two weeks later, do another three or four days. So they're all affiliated with the hospital, so I would assume it would be the same.
And, and maybe some additional discussion with both Cascade and, uh, St. Luke's through the assessor's office to have a better understanding of how those properties are being managed, if there's a difference between what's going on in Cascade versus in St. Luke's, uh, rental properties.
Well, Cascade does have a fourplex.
Threeplex.
Threeplex that they, they use for rentals for staff as well.
So two of the units, go ahead, Kristy. Two of the units are being, uh, used for staff housing and one of the units is being, one unit is being rented to someone else in the community that has nothing to do with it.
So that one won't come on the rolls?
It is on the rolls. But the other two are exempt.
Okay, so then you want to do the McCall Memorial Hospital District first today? Because we never approved those or did anything with those. I would assume all of them would qualify. Is that what your recommendation is?
Yeah, you can, you have notes okay to approve.
Anything else you want to add to those before I make the motion? So I'll make the motion, then Doug, there's gonna be, it's gonna be 84 through property 93. I'll make a motion that we approve the exemption.
Under 602D.
602D. Second. Would a second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Now, where are we going?
Uh, we need to.
St. Luke's, McCall LTD, oh, them. Two LTDs and a, and a house. And lot future expansion, two of those and one one is just a house.
All right, so lot eight and nine. We have notes okay to approve. Lot 16, lot B is going back on the rolls. But then in turn, we are going to exempt, this is a new for this year, RPM 0013, 00G, 006B.
I don't even have that one.
Because it's a new application.
Okay, so then number 162 on your list, the house, is that going on?
That, the line 162, that parcel number is going back on the rolls.
It's going back?
Yes.
That's the house that they're, they're now currently collecting rent from.
Right.
Okay. Okay, so I'll make the motion that we approve the exemption for 160, 161, McCall LTD for the exemption.
And also.
162. And 162 is going back on the rolls. Do you need a motion for that?
Uh, that's fine. We don't need a motion on that one. Uh, but we do need you to mention that you're going to grant the, uh, an exemption on the new application, RPM 0013, 00G, 006B. So a total of three will have exempt status.
Doug, did you get that number?
I didn't, but I can capture it. I can get that information from the assessor's office.
We're talking about three different properties, two of them bear a lot and a new application. And the motion was to put them, uh, to approve their exemption. I'm getting tired. Second, all in favor, please say aye. Motion carries. What are you doing here? So 160, 162 are not approving exemption.
No, that one's going back on the rolls. Uh, we put the RPM 0013, lot G, lot 6B back on.
Okay.
Sorry, that one is the one that's going to be exempt. The one on the 162 line, the first column, that one is going to go back on the tax rolls.
Assistant Leeper, did, did they make a application for number 162?
No, in their, in their, uh, documentation to us, they asked us to put it back on the rolls.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna write denied because they requested it go back there. Okay, now where are we going?
Um, we can do Camp Pinewood if you'd like.
So Camp Pinewood was, in their, in your original application, they did not submit a profit and loss statement for the camp like we requested on all of the others. So on Tuesday, uh, the vote there was to deny it for lack of sufficient information. They have submitted, they have since, since Tuesday, since last Tuesday, submitted that profit and loss statement to Kristy. Uh, you can revisit that today if you want or put that in the pile of supplemental information that we. So basically, all the other applications that we sent out denials for, for inadequate information, we encouraged them to supplement their application by this Friday and then we'll reconvene and reconsider the, the completed package next week.
I would like to wait and get them all at once.
You want to do it all at once?
All at once, same way.
Because now when they sent that.
Where are they on this list?
Well, I wish it on all of them. All this money you're getting in from receivables, is that supporting the camp or is it doing? Didn't it show that in there?
Well, what, see, what you won't have on Camp Pinewood is, is, is that explanation. They, yeah, because, because if you remember, basically, we just asked them to submit the profit and loss. But what you're gonna see on their profit and loss is very similar to all the other church camps where they have, they have income and revenues from a store, like Trinity Pines did, like Quaker Hill does. They have income and revenue from renting their camps out to non, I, I, I'm using the term secular groups, I guess.
But don't we have to show that they, they're putting that money back into the camp?
Well, and that's, and see, that's a good question because the calls that I've taken so far, and I think the assessor's office will as well, until we get through, all the way through the Board of Equalization this summer, is, is it going to be okay? Are you going to be satisfied that if they can demonstrate that their revenues that are generated on these camps from any source, doesn't matter if it's from a store or from an RV park or from renting it to a state agency or a university, if they can demonstrate that those dollars are not being diverted to other purposes but back into the operation, the maintenance of that, of that particular church camp, will that be satisfactory to you to feel comfortable enough that you can approve it at least for this year?
Yeah.
And, 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 and if so, we, we will continue to research that and we'll continue to reach out to other counties and see how they're doing. They're, they're handling those kinds of things because again, this is gonna come back up again next year and the year after. They have to reapply every year.
What's the state saying that, Brian? I mean, are we just asking them to show us that? Are we being, having a little muscle behind us for us to ask that?
Well, I, the, there's, I, I, I would consider this an unresolved area in the law. The statute's not entirely clear. You have to use, this is what the statute says. The property has to be used exclusively for the religious purpose that the organization that owns it was created. So you take any one of the church camps and the purpose, you'll find the purpose in both the bylaws and the articles of incorporation and they'll have, they'll have a statement about what that, that particular church, church's purpose is. As you would expect, it is for the advancement of their religious, their, their religious creed. The question is, if you rent it to a state agency or if you rent it to my family for a family reunion and I don't belong to that church, is that exclusive use for the religious purpose or not? Statute isn't very clear.
That's awesome.
And, and that's the question we need, that's the question we need to, or the clarification on. We can get it from, we can either get it from the courts through litigation or we can get it through the tax commission through rulemaking or the legislature through statutory amendments.
Well, let's, let's play this out a little bit. Let's say we have a church camp that 50% of their income comes from secular uses, weddings, different things, 50% comes from religious uses of that church camp. Can't we go in and say, okay, then 50% of your value would come off, would be taxable and the other 50% would? I mean, that, wouldn't that be the fairest way to do that?
Potentially, that's a good solution, El. But I would prefer to have a rule. See, the, the.
The legislature's gotta fix this.
The banks, if we don't, we're gonna get spanked either way.
Yeah. If you look at, right, so if you look at the statute, it directs the tax commission to promulgate a rule that outlines the process for apportioning out how that goes. In, in my opinion, the tax commission has not done a very good job with that rulemaking to give us clear guidance. And so for this year, if you're ultimately, if your decision is, if you can show us that you're putting the money back in and you're reinvesting it back into the property, that's fine. But then task Sue and Kristy to go out to the assessors and bring this issue to their attention and say, you know, are you, are, are other counties dealing with the same gray areas or the same concerns? And, and can we as a group go to the tax commission and seek clarification through rulemaking or, or the legislature through, uh, through amendments? Then next year, when these applications come back in front of you, you will have a much clearer set of rules. If without that, without that, you know, we, we go into court and we, and you get what you get. I mean, I, I may be able to successfully argue that this is not exclusively used for purpose, but, but maybe not.
Well, the reason I like the idea of taking non-secular money, you know, the 50/50 deal is that if they would approve that concept for a church camp, then they should prove that, approve that concept for an Airbnb. Okay, if you're bringing 70% of your income for that Airbnb is for renting it out and the other 30% is when you live there, it's your place or you're staying there, then we can take 70% of that value and tax it. With this one, it sets a precedence for the next one. Does that make sense?
Oh, yeah.
Well, yeah, and the, the challenge that you have i- is that not all organizations are accounting to that level of detail. Some of them are, actually. El, you go through and read each one of these and some of them are accounting to the level of detail that we can say.
We're good?
50% is, is for a religious purpose and 50% is not. And then others, it's, it's, it's such a, everybody has different ways of, of putting together their.
Well, and this idea came to us kind of a few years back when Anthony was here and we looked at it. I don't remember what it was, but he was able to proportion out a certain percentage that was not exempt based on the income they were bringing in. And I don't remember if it was partial commercial, partial something else. And I thought, well, that's a really great idea because you're bringing in 50%, and I'm gonna say, secular money, it's not church-related, it's not Airbnb related, so you're having an impact on our services. You're gonna need our services, ambulance, fire, all that. Sheriffs and so there should be paying a little, you know, that proportionate to the county.
Yeah, well, this, this is what the statute tells us to do right now. And this is clear and it would be easy for us to do this if church camps or charitable groups were operating this way, but they're not. Just, it doesn't meet the, this doesn't meet the business model. But if you take this courthouse as, as an example and say, this, this courthouse has a thousand square feet and we're going to rent out the building department's office space to a non-government entity. It's going to be just a, just a regular office for.
Subway.
For, for sure, uh, for Subway sandwiches. They're gonna rent that office space. We can, we can partition out the square footage of that office space and say that.
By square foot.
By square foot. But that's not how these camps are operated. It is, sometimes it's being used for a, a church camp and once that church camp is gone, then a, a non-church camp related entity comes in and uses the whole camp, not just a portion of it.
It's not up to us to.
Right, so that's where, that's where we do not have clear guidance on how to correctly interpret this. So.
Let me ask you this one then. Could the title company that we're renting for you guys come in and ask for a reduction in valuation because they've rented it to a government entity? They're making income off of it, so.
They still own the property.
They still own the property, it's just a.
Doesn't matter who, doesn't matter who their tenant is.
That one coming.
Yeah, I think for this year, I think for this year we do, that's what you said. You know, they can show us that it's all going into the camp.
And that's important for us to know for, for both me, I'm, so I'm getting calls and this is how we're gonna do it. If, if the assessor's office gets a call from a law firm or from an attorney, I'm gonna cover those calls, but, but we need guidance on, because that's what they're gonna ask us. They're gonna ask us, because, I mean, we've invited them to supplement their, their, their application, so they're gonna wanna know, what do you need from us and what form, what, what form is acceptable?
Is this a new form?
It is.
Coming for everybody, for the assessor's office to use for everything?
Based on, based on prior years, really concerns about how, and I'm, I'm not singling out church camps, it's, it's religious, it's, it's the religious exemption as well as the charitable exemption where it appears that when they were originally, when they were originally constructed, when they were originally. when they were originally, when they were originally constructed, when they were originally set up, they had a very clear exempt purpose. But over time, as they've grown, and their operations have, have evolved, we're starting to blur the lines into, is this more business? Or is this, are, are we blurring the lines into business activities?
And in the meantime, Sue's gonna go to her IAC group and say, hey, we need some resolution to go to our state tax commission to clarify these issues, so we know.
Well, when I go to my conference, I'll bring it up to the group, and then hopefully, you know, we can, IAC would be willing to move forward and ask the legislature for clarification. On the flip side of that, Rules Committee meets as well. But do I think we will have clarification by this time next year? No, I think it'll take at least two years, and that's if everything is.
Next year's election year too, so that's not gonna be your.
If you, but, but if you are working towards this, and we are communicating with these groups that have these properties, and we're clear and transparent about, about, you know, what it is that we're try, I mean, our, my goal in providing you legal advice is to give you the clearest, the clearest and most clean way of implementing the law as, as you can. This is just, this is just one of those real challenging areas where we're dealing with some ambiguities based on, I think, what the legislature anticipated when these exemptions went in place. They weren't thinking about these kinds of operations.
And I think we're gonna have a case sooner or later one of these years, whether it's charitable or religious, where it's pretty obvious that they're only using this one month out of the year for, for the store charitable, and the rest of the time it's a commercial, business-type model. And those are the ones I feel like, let's kick it upstairs and see what the state BOE does with that. Because it's gonna take that kind of heat to get to the tax commission to make the rules. Nobody's, you know, the grease you will gets the grease, so to speak, and nobody's appealing them, and so they're, we're not getting anything back.
Well, and quite possibly, quite possibly, we could have a few of those this year. Because you've already, you've already denied some, and the turnaround time to supplement their application is really narrow, they have until Friday. And, and, and that's only because the final decision from this board has to be May fifteenth. So if we give them until Friday to submit the information, that gives Christie really one day to compile all of that, get it to Sue and myself to review it. And then we're gonna have to come back next Tuesday, like we did the previous Tuesday, and say, here's the packet of supplemental information for your, for your.
And that was my next question, is, is if you can get this done by next Tuesday? And we need to get Doug to advertise it, and if you feel like you can, I think there were sixteen of them, we narrowed that down quite a bit today, so.
And some of them are just simply not gonna have the time to supplement their application. So what they will do then is file an appeal in front of you in the BOE.
We.
And they can supplement their application that way. Which, that's, that's okay. So it won't be a marathon next week, like it was this last week. But there are, Camp Pinewood is one who, who has already supplemented their application. I, I think Trinity Pines is gonna attempt it, but I don't know if they'll be able to in time, and.
I bet they're working on it.
And others. So, yes, they are working on it, and I've spoken to their attorney this morning, so.
So Mr. Okey, what I'm hearing is we should in fact set a meeting for May ninth?
Is next Tuesday available?
Yeah, I mean.
Assuming you don't have time on your calendar, your agenda for Monday, because you've got budget.
It looks pretty full, other than like one hour.
So I.
I don't think we can do it in an hour.
Apologize for the.
When's our day, and it's Monday?
Next Monday is jam-packed, so it will have to be another day on the, on the night.
Let's do it Tuesday. You wanna do it at eight again, Neil, or do you wanna go a little later? It's fine, I'd rather do it early than late. Okay, so can we do it again at eight, Doug?
Yep. Make sure to get.
I know it's early, but it's really not early, it's four thirty. Donuts, I know Sherri wouldn't do it. We should have donuts instead. Bring donuts.
So.
I get them. You're gonna buy, aren't you? What? Oh, the donut shop? I don't know, I don't know where the place is. I tried them, she's, oh, they're heavy. Okay. Okay. I'm not in charge.
So we have SISCRa.
Oh, yeah, we didn't talk about that.
On Tuesday, SISCRa came up, I think what was conveyed to the board at that time was that there was only, there was only a mobile home. There, there are quite a lot of other structures.
Yeah, what is, I know where it's at, I just don't know.
Southern Idaho Senior.
Southwestern Idaho Senior Citizens Recreation Association.
There you go.
What's not a religious group, it's a charitable?
It's a charitable group.
For all, for all people. You'll be out there, El. I have it here where you approved it.
So, SISCRa.
Okay.
I think, I believe, I believe it's a little bit better, it's probably, I don't, I'm not gonna ask you to make a decision on SISCRa today, I think this is something that needs to go on the agenda for Tuesday. But we need to reopen that decision that you made, and give you the full picture of what's going on. SISCRa is, SISCRa is a nonprofit corporation. Their campground is Bureau of Reclamation-owned, so we're not talking about real property, we're just talking about the structures and improvements on that particular piece of property. The charitable corporation that they created was to provide camping and recreational opportunities for people over sixty. And as they have informed us in their application, the Bureau of Reclamation is now requiring them to make that campground available. People of all ages.
Really?
So now we have, because the Bureau of Reclamation has changed the rules of the game, we have this conflict between what their charitable purpose is, and what they're actually running that campground.
Financial liability income?
Yeah, a little bit.
I can't, I would much rather, I'd better not say it online.
So anyway.
Yeah, we need to revisit that one.
Yes.
That's their site.
Holy shit.
So she had sent in the old one-page reapplication to us on the last day.
Fifteen buildings?
And then I reached out to her and said, no, we need this, and I gave her all the forms that needed in the application and everything, and she did get it to me, but it was after our meeting Tuesday. And that's why we feel like we should have, because we didn't.
We didn't have all the information.
She thought it was just the one.
And they all have electrical hookups, so that's an improvement. They're all RV sites.
I just know how that works.
Those are RV sites.
Just RV hookups?
Huh?
SISCRa had to pay to put them in the BOR.
All these yellow ones are buildings, there's a rec hall, middle restroom, west restroom, kitchen, shelter, guest restroom, office shop, trailer shop, storage, CXT east restroom.
They got quite a.
But they've got electricity in almost all of the, all of the campsites. Is there, I don't know, there would be sewer, because they have all these. Have water, have water too.
Got a wheelchair railing.
Oh my.
So, yes.
That's a, oh boy, that's gonna be a tough one here, just to figure out the improvements. Go down that road.
Well, our appraisal team has to go down that road, because they're going to have to head out in the field and start getting all this stuff drawn on appropriately.
Oh, trailer parking. Anything legal? Totally trailer parking. I'm just asking a question. Where SISCRa has this agreement all these, who knows how many years, developed that, and the BOR said, oh, no, no, we're gonna change rules. So are they gonna make them charging too? Do they have any recourse? Don't. They'll just cancel the lease, take over the campground.
Eventually.
And then the bureau own it, and it'll all be tax exempt. Nobody liked those guys. Oh, yeah, that would make a, that's not gonna be very good politically for those. No. Throw a bunch of old people out, yeah, that's a smart thing to do.
Yeah, that's, it's gonna, you know, I, it's one of those things where it.
How much is membership?
It appears that no fault of SISCRa's, they're, they're now in a situation where they're, they're in conflict with their, with their charitable purpose. So they could potentially be facing not only property taxes, but also income, income taxes from the IRS.
Probably have pretty good insurance, but it would be good to see a P and L on that.
So.
Okay, we'll talk about that one Tuesday as well.
Okay, one last quick thing, and then we'll cut you loose, I guess. Uh, the Mountain Life Church, if you recall from Tuesday, there was a discrepancy on property ownership. And, uh, they had put in Christie's hand what appears to be a deed transferring the property to the appropriate, to the appropriate church corporation. So if that's the case, we will put that on the agenda for Tuesday, but should resolve the concerns related to that denial.
Yeah, we approved the exemption, but we need to clarify that in my notes. Okay.
And so I think that one, that one should be. Do you guys have any questions for, for us going forward? I guess, uh, since you will be convening as the Board of Equalization and hearing these appeals, whichever ones come your way, just remember to be careful about ex parte contacts, redirect folks back to the assessor's office or my office if you're getting calls from.
And you, and you will get calls, you're gonna get calls on this church deal too.
Just to confirm, Mr. Okey, on next Tuesday, they're still gonna be convening as the Board of County Commissioners. Okay, thank you.
On Tuesday, you're so troubled, then you can't vote on it. A tie vote, two people, a tie vote is an automatic no. And that's, you can, you can use that politically, so.
Did you guys decide eight, eight o'clock, okay?
Eight o'clock work for you?
Yeah. I'm with Neil, like, the earlier the better.
Okay, we're done?
Lots of hard work on this stuff, I appreciate your, your efforts.
Doug, this meeting is adjourned.
It's a team effort.